Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We're going to start off with prayer for those who want to partake, please do, and then we will go into the pledge. I got people fingering me, so that means council and accomplice wants to lead the prayer.
Gracious Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity for us again to gather as a city and as a council to work on the things of this great city. Father, we thank you that as we discuss the progress of this day and the future projects that we have, Lord, we thank you for your grace and your wisdom. Lord, we ask that in everything that we have that we get an understanding, but that we will operate by your wisdom and your grace to progress this great city. Lord, I ask that you cover our mayor, cover our city officials, cover our city staff, our city council, and our residents as we deal with trauma, as we deal with grief, as we deal with life. Lord, we ask that you give us grace and as we remember that, and we declare that Saginaw is restored. Saginaw is restored as we work towards a greater tomorrow. We pray this in your Son, Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the public meeting and the audience, but I'm going to wait for everybody to come
Councilmember Flores.
Present.
Councilmember Copeland.
Present.
Mayor Moore.
Present.
Nine members present, zero absent.
Any announcements, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, I do want to remind everyone that yes, it is spring.
There's one, two seats up here, young lady, if you'd like to have a seat.
Therefore, your yard waste pickup has already started, and it is collected on your regular
You're not in the principal's office, I just want to see you.
trash day. You must use separate yard waste containers, and yard waste stickers are available in
Again, good evening. For those who don't know me, my name is Brenda F. Moore. I'm the mayor of the city of Saginaw.
the city clerk's office. And City Hall will be closed Friday, April 15th, for Good Friday and the Easter holiday.
Want to make sure you know who I am, so you get it right. This is a public meeting, and the audience has asked you remain from speaking, interrupting,
Mayor, on our agenda, we have a certificate recognizing Dr. Michael Gavin as president
booing, and all things that would disrupt this meeting.
of Delta College.
Is Dr. Gavin or a representative? As a friendly housekeeping tidbit, all city council members, let's not mind, all city I'm sorry, Dr. Gavin, I see you back there. Come on up to the podium, please. What did they say? Come on down. council members, cut your tablets down and cut those phones on vibrate. Dr. Gavin, we're going to have Councilwoman Scherzer read your recognition. Audience, please cut yours on vibrate.
Certificate of recognition.
I still need a phone. So if I hear one or no phone, I'll ask, can I have your phone?
Whereas on behalf of the Saginaw City Council and the citizens of Saginaw, it is an honor and privilege to extend this certificate of recognition to Dr. Michael Gavin.
Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia.
Present.
We congratulate Dr. Gavin on his inauguration as the fifth president of Delta College.
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Bench.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Balls.
And whereas we recognize his commitment to the notion that community colleges can reshape
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Present.
Councilmember Ostache.
the inequities in society through open access education and teaching excellence. And whereas, since accepting the role as the president of Delta College, Dr. Gavin has focused on strengthening partnerships with local K-12 school districts with the goal of offering dual enrollment opportunities for students in K-12 districts. A partnership developed from this focus is the Saginaw Academy of Excellence. Beginning in the fall of 2022, Saginaw Public Schools students will be able to take college courses free of charge at the downtown Saginaw Center. And whereas, known nationally for administrative leadership that focuses on academic excellence and equity with more than 20 years of experience within community colleges, I am confident that Delta College will continue to adapt and flourish under the leadership of Dr. Gavin. Now, therefore, be it resolved, I, Brenda F. Moore, mayor of the city of Saginaw, on behalf of my fellow council members and the citizens of this community, deeming an honor to recognize Dr. Michael Gavin on this special occasion. We hereby extend our appreciation for the powerful impact he has made on our community and offer our best wishes for many more successful years in the future. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of Saginaw to be affixed on this fourth day of April in the year of our Lord, 2022. Signed, Brenda F. Moore, Mayor, and Councilmembers Michael D. Balls, our Mayor Pro Tem, Annie Bench, George Copeland Jr., Michael Flores, Monique Lamar Sylvia, Bill Ostache, Autumn L. Scherzer, and Reggie Williams II. And also signed by Timothy Morales, our city manager.
Dr. Gavin, since you entered into our city, you are now officially a city Saginaw resident. You may say something, sir.
Okay, well, first of all, I'm overwhelmed and honored to accept this. Thank you very much. I'm very appreciative. I actually do it on behalf of Delta College with great team members behind me. I did have a quick presentation I could offer if you'd want me to, Mayor Moore, or...
You coming back.
Okay.
I just want you to talk about your recognition. You're coming back.
No problem. Well, I just want to say thank you and that I'm honored to be part of Saginaw City and that Delta College is here to serve all of its, all the residents that we have for many decades done and that we are looking forward to having that center right down the road filled with students, more and more students each year. So in that case, I will turn it over to you, but thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you again.
Mayor, you are now at public hearings.
The purpose of the public hearing is to, is for the public to address council as a whole, for council to hear the information provided by speakers for consideration regarding a specific action being requested. Speakers must limit their remarks to the subject of the public hearing. Please begin by stating your name and your position, such as supporter, if you support or if you oppose it in your public hearing. The first speaker is the main presenter, and you will have 10 minutes. Any speaker after that has three minutes. Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Our public hearing tonight is regarding a request to establish an obsolete property rehabilitation district at 2138 North Carolina Street.
Do we have anyone here that would like to speak on this?
Yeah, Larry Holman. I'm the owner of the property, and I will also be the contractor doing the work. And we're asking for this because it's a big project and it's going to take probably eight, nine months to complete. There's a lot, lot of construction work has to be done, and I'd like you to know that I've been in construction for 50 years. So I think our biggest problem is getting material and getting the help, the way things are today. But I love a challenge, and we'll get through it. The building is a great building. It was actually like it was built for what we're going to use it for. It's going to work out great, but it does need some help. And we're really excited about it. I got a good crew put together, and I think in the end, you guys will be very proud that it's in your city. It's going to be great for the city, the county, and the neighborhood. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this subject?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, councilmembers, city manager, and city staff. My name is Cassie Zimmerman. I'm here representing Saginaw Future and speaking in support of the Oprah application for the project being proposed at 2138 North Carolina. Bob Galen, the urban planner of the city, and I have been working with this group here of developers for the last about eight months or so to ensure that all processes are being done correctly and with the best interests of the city in mind. This project is huge for the North Moore neighborhood as well as the city of Saginaw. If approved by city council today, the Oprah application will be submitted to the state for their approval. If fully approved, we will see development begin this year at this site. The site that I'm talking about is the former Ferbringer Elementary School. The building will be redeveloped, the existing building, into 42 residential assisted living and memory care facility. This transformational project is a great precedent to provide an example for future developments at our schools and other buildings that currently sit vacant. Even though what you're approving today is a tax exemption, the property is, has already transitioned from a tax exempt status to private ownership, meaning that they have already begun having to pay taxes where they previously have not had to. This tax exemption still requires the payment of local millages and therefore will result in an increase of $7,000 to the city's tax base. The exemption will allow the developer to forego paying increases to property taxes as a result of the improvements that they are making and the million dollars that they estimate being invested into this property. This tax benefit is going to save them approximately $7,700 a year annually to help the development be more successful. The redevelopment of the former Ferbringer School will result in approximately 26 good-paying jobs in the healthcare industry. Saginaw Future has calculated the economic impact these jobs will have on the community. It will bring approximately $622,000 to be spent on goods and services. This will directly support 26 additional jobs in the service and goods and services industries. The construction services needed for the development will result in 71 temporary jobs, which will bring an additional $3.5 million into the community during that construction period of about eight to nine months. This is an amazing project for Saginaw, and these developers have been great to work with and truly have accepted Saginaw for what it is and hope to do more developments here. I highly support this project and their Oprah application, and I hope you do the same. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Is, I'm sorry. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this, at this time? Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this time? For the final call, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this public hearing? I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Here is no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. The ayes have it. Madam Clerk.
We are at public input.
This is the fun part of the meeting. I'd like to welcome all of those who have signed up to address the council tonight. Please speak slowly and clearly so that we can understand what you are saying and we don't miss what you have to say. You will be called to the podium by the clerk. Speakers have three minutes. That is your limit. The clerk will be timing you at that time once again. We need to refrain from clapping, booing, and any obsession noise because this is being aired on SGTV, and we don't want nobody to know that we sitting up in here playing. So, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Our first speaker is Lance Cope.
Yes, greeting to the mayor, greeting to the pro tem, greeting to the councilmembers and staff. My name is Lance Cope. I'm 36 years old. I'm here to speak for the youth in the community on saving the Civitane Recreation Center. Our youth, they have nowhere to go or nothing to do. Growing up, my mom and dad had addiction. The Civitane provided mental peace, my last meal a lot of nights. The community helped raise me, gave me rise to Saturday League games. Civitane was a team. We worked hard, we played hard. It wasn't a day we didn't work out as a team. Once they bind this bill, you see the same people every day, they become family. This is something this generation haven't had a chance to experience. We can save some of our youth. The goal is to save all by saving Civitane Recreation Center. The Civitane can offer computer learning, bag lunches, Saturday League, game room, something to reward with after finishing homework, house counseling, house visit, in-house counseling, motivational speakers, movie day, field trips, AAU volleyball, basketball, football, transportation to drop youth off home safe. Civitane can offer anger management, violence prevention, thinking for change, substance abuse phase one and two, driver's training, skills and trades to prepare the youth that's getting ready to become adults. If Saginaw proposed budget numbers on YouTube are right, 2021, 2022, arts, culture, recreation receive lower numbers on the budget, $410,927. Police and fire receive $27,238,967. Could the community use some of the neighborhood revitalization, $7,473,921 to help get Civitane back open? Also use some of the economic development of urban core, $1,533,628. Could the Michigan Strategic Fund Act, Act 270 of 1984, MCL 12520908, help save the Civitane? It's a very historical building. The history of the building goes all the way back to 1948. Could it be possible it be registered as a historical building and reopened for the youth to learn unity and how to love? Draymond Green and Lamar Willie went to Longstreet School and participated in an after-school program. Civitane helped build their greatness, three times NBA champion, one Super Bowl champion. As a community, can we get the timeframe up to June 3rd to file for a revitalization and placemaking grant to save the Civitane Recreation Center? The best historical building in the city, cut millions of dollars from the state parks and recreations years ago. The black people in the low-income community didn't understand it would have effect on our community today. Let's save our youth from becoming a police recreation. Let's save our youth from becoming a dispensary profit. I worked hard over the weekend, got moms and dads out, got signatures, want to see the Civitane open. Want to see a better future for their children. I want to thank you for hearing me and have a blessed day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jamal Hill.
Hey, how you doing? I'm Jamal Hill. I'm on behalf of the Civitane Recreation Center, like Lance was talking about. We need something like that in the community because I grew up going to the Civitane, and there's always something positive when you got some other older people that can help you with your problems and give you some type of hope. Also, the basketball program was amazing, and nowadays, the younger community, they need something to do with their time besides Facebook and stuff that really ain't making a lot of sense. So I feel like Lance feel the building is a big success for the city, and we need something like that in our community, across the bridge on the east side of the highway. So I'm with the Civitane coming back up, and I'll do anything I can do to help it because I see it's a future for a younger community. And that'll be all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joe Loprenna. Do not see Joe. We will go to Janie Lamar.
When you come up to speak, if you have to adjust the mic, it'll raise up and down so that we can hear you. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Moore. Good evening, councilmembers. Good evening, city officials. My name is Janee Lamar, and I am excited to be here this evening to share that I am running for 10th Circuit Court Judge. I was born and grew up here in Saginaw. I graduated from Saginaw High School and the Saginaw Arts and Sciences Academy. I was proud to come home to open my practice here and have had the privilege of serving many area families. The judge elected to replace retiring Judge Jim Borchard will preside primarily over family matters, including divorce, custody, and child support. Experience in those matters is essential, and my practice has been devoted to helping clients with those issues. I'm inspired to run because my mother, the late Pamela Lamar Jordan, dedicated her career to serving underprivileged youth in Saginaw. I want to continue to serve families as a judge. Thank you for having me here this evening. Tonight, I'm sorry, tomorrow, I will officially kick off my campaign at Hoyt Library at 5:30 PM, and the public is more than welcome to attend. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rudy Hernandez. Rudy Hernandez. Let's go to Anna Patton.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Moore, Pro Tem Michael Balls, city manager Timothy Morales, and the city councilmembers. I live in the city of Saginaw, and I have been here since the 1970s. And I noticed on, if I'm not here usually, I watch you guys on television when you meet on Mondays. And I noticed the meeting was held on 3/7/2022 by Dr. Dallas, who's on the city planning commission. And she brought up the fact that the city is planning to rezonate some properties on the north side for light industrial. And my thing is, a lot of people that lived in that community, and I have family in that area, they didn't know anything about it. They wasn't informed. And so what I'm asking is, what are you going to do about the people that remains there in that, I guess is a green zone right now? And will the green zone be removed? Because, you know, if you do do this rezoning, will that be removed? And the reason why I ask is people need their homes fixed over there, and it's a lack of funding. They can't get a city grant. When you call to get a city grant, they say you're in the green zone. When you go to the bank, the bank says you're in the green zone. Yes, I do know that they have the 211, but everybody doesn't qualify when you call that 211 number. And so what I'm asking is, are they going to ever remove the green zone and lift it up? Because what's going to happen is, a lot of people are not going to be able to fix their homes, and these homes are going to go to pieces. So then we're going to have blight, more blight. And my point is, if there's a lot of empty buildings, a lot of blight, trees falling, empty churches along North Washington even right now, we're going to probably, we already know that we're headed probably to a recession. Food has increased, gas has increased, and people pay, paycheck hasn't increased. Most of our paychecks hasn't increased. So what I'm saying is, a lot of business and stuff, when you go through there, have not really, some of them have folded up. So when you're riding through there, even churches have folded up. So what I'm asking is, if a business come in and it flops, now we got more stuff. We got not only the new businesses flopping, we got already existing builders and churches that are boarded or not boarded, but anyway, I just want to thank you.
Motion to extend our time for 45 seconds.
Second. It's been moved to second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Just one minute.
Okay. And the reason why I'm saying that is, I don't want it to end up where we got more blight on top of life. And what I'm asking is, why don't we clean up a lot of the old buildings and houses and fallen trees and the dumping, you know, with some of the ARPA money or whatever to make it look nice? And I'm worried also about the corridor, 675 corridor on both sides. It fits you and while it's worth going back. What's going to happen with this area? Because it needs to be cleaned up, it needs to be beautified, because when we're coming through there, it looks really bad. And what happened was, when they had the people rerouting through the area, like Potter Street, Carlisle, Carroll, these people were like blowing their minds. But anyway, I want to thank you. I appreciate everything you all do, and thank you so much for the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jeffrey Bowles.
Good evening, city council, mayor, pro tem, city staff. First thing I want to say to the council as a whole is thank you. For those who are watching or who are in attendance that don't know, we had a community meeting last week, last Friday, I believe, which was 4-1. And it was on what the previous speaker was talking about, the rezoning on North Saginaw, on Washington and the North Saginaw corridor. And it was a great meeting. I want to thank you guys for, you know, all of you that showed up to the meeting. It was great to see you all there. Also great for the citizens that came from the affected area. They were able to get their questions answered. They were able to engage with you guys, and it was overall a great meeting. And I want to, you know, thank you guys for coming and participating. Reggie, thank you for offering first to come and then everybody else that came on board. Again, it was a great meeting. Just want to follow up and reiterate some of what came out of that meeting. Number one, the citizens of the area, it wasn't all of the citizens, so we're clear. It wasn't all of the citizens that were from the area, but it was a good amount. And, you know, the prevailing sentiment that came out of that meeting is that the people in that area don't want rezoning in that area. Now, to say that they don't want rezoning at this point doesn't mean that it's off the table going forward. I think what it does is, it allows us to reset, come back to the table, and have a collaborative effort between the citizens and our leadership and come up with a plan together. And I think if we do that, we'll have a better outcome. The citizens will have a stake in what's happening in their community. I think, you know, more than anything, you know, and Councilwoman Bench said this after the meeting to me, was that that area isn't all residential. So you have some mixed development that happens in that area, that could happen in that area. So I think that could be part of the plan going forward. But again, I think it would be wise to put this on hold, plug in with the citizens, come up with a plan together, and I think we'll have a great outcome. I want to thank you all again for coming to that meeting. I think we may have another one. I'll be in touch with you all. Other than that, thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have Leon Burns. We do not see Leon. Let's go to Lynn Vella.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Vella. Thank you for your service. And I am hoping the ARPA funds will be going to the citizens of Saginaw who have not bailed and are holding their communities and neighborhoods together with hard work, innovation, and hope. The nonprofits who have worked hard to raise money to help citizens in need of food, clothing, housing, and health services. And by the way, the rescue mission has had to give back grant money because of the lack of viable housing for their clients. The arts organizations working hard to create an exciting cultural community, people volunteering to clean up parks and neighborhoods, the YMCA offering services in the city for young and old, small businesses...
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have Leon Burns. We do not see Leon. Let's go to Lynn Vella.
And here we go. Good evening. My name is Lynn Vella. Thank you for your service. And I am hoping the ARPA funds will be going to the citizens of Saginaw, who have not bailed and are holding their communities and neighborhoods together with hard work, innovation, and hope. The nonprofits who have worked hard to raise money to help citizens in need of food, clothing, housing, and health services. And by the way, the rescue mission has had to give back grant money because of the lack of viable housing for their clients. The arts organizations working hard to create an exciting cultural community, people volunteering to clean up parks and neighborhoods, the YMCA offering services in the city for young and old, small businesses offering up their resources and hard work to provide important services, young people organizing to create healthy connections, such as the Civitan Center. There are so many needs and people filling the gaps, but volunteers cannot do this forever. They need organized help and support from their elected government. The citizens are weary and will soon be those that have already moved on in frustration. You can't expect people to burn out their lives just to live in a city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, we are now at remarks of council.
My fellow council persons, you have three minutes as well. And tonight, we will begin with Councilman Oster.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for everyone coming out tonight and everybody that's watching on our YouTube channel and also our TV station. This is amazing. Our council chamber is full, we have standing room only. So thank you. It's a rainy night, but y'all chose to come out and participate in your local government. I do wanna thank you, Jeff, for putting that together. It was nice to come there and listen to the concerns, and also for organizing all of the food. It was very good, I did take some home afterwards, so thank you for that. Okay, and a couple of things here. I just wanna say to the ARPA Commission or the ARPA Commissioners, we've heard the committee that's been formed, and they've been meeting. I did attend their last meeting, and it was very informative to listen to the Commissioners talk back and forth and go through some of the process. I do encourage my colleagues to show up, and these are public meetings. The next one will be April 7th, here in the council chambers at 5:00 PM, if you'd like to come and listen. And they do have a public input section at the end. Just wanna make another announcement for the Old Town Association area. They're gonna have their 15th Annual Easter Egg Hunt, that's gonna be Saturday, April 16th. It's gonna be at 1:00 PM, starting at Borchardt Park for the 1-3-year-olds. And then the Courthouse Lawn, there's gonna be two other age groups over there, 4-6-year-old and then the 7-9-year-olds. I understand they still are stuffing the 23,000 eggs that they have to stuff for the event. There's like 50,000 pieces of candy. They are doing egg stuffing events at Jake's Old City Grill. They are doing on Mondays from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM. He is closed at that time, but he is providing food and refreshments for the volunteers that come out to help. And then Jake has, actually, the owner, Paul Barrera, has guaranteed that the bunnies will be coming soon to the courtyard lawn. I do wanna acknowledge Delta College, my alma mater, my first two years of college when I started. It was really exciting to have you here tonight. It's exciting to have you in the city and to hear some of the programs that now that you're offering for the high school students, because having you in the city of Saginaw, it creates a walkability for people to get to school or just even taking the local bus system. So thanks for everything that you are doing in our community. So I'm gonna keep it short. Mayor, I'm done.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Floret.
Good evening, Saginaw. It's great to see everybody here. As many of you know, March 31st was Cesar Chavez Day, given to us nationally by President Obama in 2014. What I got from the public comments is a quote that Mr. Chavez had said a long time ago, that "We cannot seek achievement for ourselves and forget about progress and prosperity for our community." I don't think anybody came up here talking about something that they wanted for themselves, but they're looking to better our community. So that gives my heart a lot of hope for the future. So, thank you for that. And then also, the Cinco de Mayo parade is coming back after two years of being on recess from COVID. It's on May 7th. It's gonna start at 10:30 AM on 40th Street, across from the Ojibwe Island. And then there's also gonna be a festival from Huntington Bank from 12 until 5:00. So if you have any questions, please get ahold of me, 989-992-3803. The coordinator for that event is Tina Rivera. Also, yeah, Dr. Gavin, it's great to have you here. Thank you so much for the time that you gave to the Hispanic community about four months ago. I'm sure I'm gonna see the same presentation in a couple minutes here, but I'm also a Delta alma mater, and I worked at the RIT Center, and I know the importance of educating the entire community. So, yeah, it's really great to have you here today. And then last, yeah, I agree with the rezoning. As many of you know, I had asked to postpone that vote so we can kinda look into it. I'm glad that Mr. Bowles had taken the initiative to get people more involved. To all my fellow council members, according to our ordinance 153.561D, we can hold additional meetings if we so choose to, motion to do so. So that's always an option as well. I know that it's great to have the public do their own meetings, but we can have some in accordance with what our ordinances say. So hopefully, that will be something that we can look forward in the future as well. Other than that, I'm gonna be at Hoyt tomorrow at 5:30, looking at books and meeting people. That's it.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Copeland.
All right. Good evening, everyone. It's glad to be back in council chambers. I wasn't able to be here last week. And so before I start, I wanna say thank you to our public speakers who showed up this evening. Thank you again. It's great to hear about the Civitan. I also want to give my condolences to the family of Mr. Michael Finney. As an SVU alum, you cannot attend that institution without hearing that great name and the legacy that he has for the state of Michigan and for the city of Saginaw. So my condolences are with his family. I do wanna commend Councilwoman Lamar Sylvia and Mayor Moore on an event they recently had for housing, which was a packed house at Lewis Temple. I thought they were having church, but it was getting information on housing. They did an amazing job. And congratulations to Pitt and Balcony, SVU Symphony Concert Choir, and the Saginaw Bay Symphony Orchestra on a great production on Amadeus. And then also, this Friday, we've been talking about the stories of Saginaw. This Friday, at Dawn of a New Day, from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM, the Marshall Frederick Sculpture Museum will be creating a video archive of stories from locals in our community. If this is gonna be a great opportunity for some of those who are in our community, who've lived in our community, get them to Dawn of a New Day from 1:00 to 3:00 PM, so we can get their history and their story on tape, so we can have that for our archives of the city. Upcoming, right now, we have the, we're getting ready for the Small Business Expo that will be in August, but the registration is open right now. So if you are a small business and you wanna be on display at Morley Park, okay, the registration is open right now. Please go onto the website at saginaw-michigan, M-I dot com forward slash S E D C. The application is right there, and you can pay right there. Clerk, how, Madam Clerk, how much time do I have?
One minute.
Okay. All right. And so finally, I had, I wanted to do this, I wanted to rush through some of my announcements I have. Recently, I've been starting this thing with my little boys, and every morning, we've been doing affirmations. So recently, my son, we were doing something, and the affirmation that I gave him, and we've been going over in the morning, he remembered, and he said it himself. So it made me think about the various things in my life, that a lot of times, we may face challenges, we may face a lot of things going in our community, and it's hard to remember the good at times. And sometimes, we need those reminders. So what I started to do, at my desk, I have little pieces of paper. And so the paper I have at my desk right now, it says Saginaw is restored. So what I do typically, I may be working throughout the day, and I'll look down at my desk or my screen, and I see Saginaw is restored, and I just say Saginaw is restored. Because I wanna get in the mindset of beginning to talk about the good, restoring the hope within myself, when it comes down to the city. And so sometimes, it has to be that continuous affirmation that we have to remind ourselves that we want to, oh.
Motion to extend the councilman's time for one minute. One minute.
You wanna be the second?
Can I second it?
I'll second it.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Excuse me. All right, and let's come back together.
We have the second.
It's been moved to second. No, but we also had a lot of talking. It's been moved to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay.
All right, let's go.
As soon as she gives you your minute.
She did a minute. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So because of that, I just wanted to share this with some of our residents. If you wanna do something like this, I just have some pieces of paper that you can take, put it in your car, put it in your dashboard, wherever you wanna go. Just send a reminder of yourself, Saginaw is restored. We heard about the Civitan today, about the restoration that we want to see in our community. It's an opportunity to remember that. So we may just need that reminder. So after the council meeting today, I just have a couple pieces of paper. It's not much, but it's just a reminder that you can have. Thank you. And thank you, council, for my extension.
Thank you. Next, we will have Councilwoman Sylvia.
Good evening. First of all, I would like to thank all of the young people that are in attendance this evening. It does my heart glad to see persons come out and start coming to council meetings and seeing what we're doing, what we're not doing, what we could do. I definitely, definitely wanna get with the first two speakers in regards to the Civitan. If anyone knows, that's my thing, the youth. And I'd like to also thank Ms. Janaye Lamar, Ms. Anna Patton, and Mr. Bowles. Definitely, that was a very, very good meeting. I did attend the meeting on last Friday. And I listened. I didn't just attend, I listened to the people and what they had to say. So it was very, very good. Councilman Oster did a wonderful job. He explained a lot of things that I didn't know. You also, Mr. Bowles, explained some things that I didn't know. And one thing I like to do in all that, getting, get understanding, so I have better understanding. And hopefully, us together as council persons will meet the needs of the citizens who voted us in. That is definitely my goal, and I can't stress that enough. And the mayor, Mayor Moore, asked me to assist her, she tried to be slick with it, but to assist her with housing. And these are grants that you do not have to pay back, we cannot stress that enough. You don't have to pay it back. So I don't know if that's on the website, I think, is it? Can I ask you that? Anywho, look on my page, I do have some information that you, and maybe they'll put it on the website, because it's up to $10,000, and a lot of us can utilize that, that are homeowners. And you don't have to live in the city, Saginaw County. Get that, get them dollars. Have a great day.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sylvia. Next, we have Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to thank our public speakers for coming forward. And with that, I just wanna put out there, too, when it comes down, I'm glad that the speakers came forward about the Civitan and the interest is there, but I do wanna say this on top of that. When there are things that, opportunities in Saginaw, jump on them right away. Let's not wait until someone else comes in and then make a move because we see that this change could be, you know, it's something that we don't like. Jump on these opportunities. We are a city that is flourishing with nothing but opportunities. And all it takes is really talking to the right people, the networking, and figuring out the right information in order to make those things happen. But I'm glad to see that the interest is there in trying to preserve it. I would also like to say congratulations on his recognition, Dr. Gavin. If you have not personally met this man, he is someone that you would like to meet because he has great energy. I mean, great energy. And I've only met him a couple times, but you know, when you shake someone's hand or you're in the presence of someone, and you can just feel good vibes, that's what he has. And I like that. Mr. Bowles, thank you for organizing that meeting on Friday. Pastor Bowen, thank you for hosting. I thought, he said it was successful, I felt it was successful. I always think it's great when we have an opportunity to sit down and listen to our community. And we had that opportunity, and I hope that more comes from this, more engagement. And as Councilman Flores said, even we can, you know, organize some engagement. I think that should happen as well. And with that said, that's all that I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Williams. Next, we have Councilperson Bench. Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Bench.
Thank you, and good evening to everyone. I too would like to thank all of our public speakers for being here tonight, and just express my appreciation for all of the commitment that all of you have to making Saginaw a better place. It's evident that we are a community filled with people who truly love their hometown. So we're really grateful for that. I wanted to say to Ms. Lamar, congratulations on your announcement. Thank you for your willingness to serve. Ms. Patton and Mr. Bowles, thank you very much for making your voices heard. I too wanna extend my thank yous for organizing the meeting the other day, and I agree with my colleagues that we don't have to use the ordinance and call an official meeting and, you know, have a stipend paid to us in order to have these conversations with you guys. We can just set up town halls and have these conversations with you guys. And I hope that does continue to happen going forward, because I definitely heard what was said there, and I'm certainly taking everything that has been, you know, said as far as concerns go into consideration in my decision. I think that's all I have, but I do appreciate it. I do wanna congratulate Dr. Gavin and thank him, and just reiterate what Councilman Williams said, was, I don't know that we've ever met entirely personally, but I've heard you speak several times. And it's always very impressive and very inspiring, and I've been very excited because I love Delta College, and that was my college as well. So we're just very happy to have you here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Sherri.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too want to say thank you to all of our public speakers and those watching at home. Definitely appreciate and value your input and concerns. I'm gonna start off by congratulating our Officer of the Month, Officer Brad Williamson, from our Saginaw Police Department, and also the retirement of Sergeant James Walney.
Yes.
In K-9 Debo. Sergeant Walney served 27 years with our police department, so congratulations on your retirement. I also wanted to do a shout out to the President of the Urban Tennis Foundation, who is in the audience today, Farrington Douglas. And if you don't know him, please take the time to talk to him before you leave today. If you have noticed, the tennis courts are completed, and there is going to be some, well, we approved at the last meeting, the paving of the parking lot, one of the construction projects, if you wanna call it, for the summer. So be on the lookout, because there will be some events coming up, and we hope the entire community comes out and supports the Urban Tennis Foundation. Lastly, I want to just share my sentiments. If you didn't know Michael Finney, he was a leader and a groundbaker in workforce and economic development. He serviced the Flint, Saginaw, and lastly, the Miami-Dade community. He developed, implemented, and secured the Michigan Economic Development Corporation's Community Ventures Program, which contributed greatly to the Saginaw community for almost seven years. So my heartfelt condolences to the family. We also lost Frederick Burks, who, if you don't know who Fred Burks was, he played a huge role with the youth in our community here in Saginaw and in Bay City. So rest in peace to both of them. And lastly, I just wanna publicly share my heartfelt thank you to Sam and Daniel's Grill, who closed on Saturday, unfortunately. If you didn't know Sam, you would always see him at the YMCA working out. He opened his doors and gave coffee and food to the community that was in need. And I'm so sad, and I know a few council members, and I tried our best to work with him before he closed his doors, but Sam, if you're listening, and even if you're not, you were an integral part of this community, and I hope it is not goodbye, but see you soon in a different venture. So that is all I have.
Thank you. Next, we have Mayor Pro Tem Voss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank the citizens who are coming out to the City Council today, because you guys will make the city of Saginaw what it is and what it may be later. Mr. Douglas, I'd like to personally thank you again, you know, for bringing back the Garber Courts back to the city of Saginaw. If anybody's seen that, you can see it's a magnificent place. I think they invested well over $1 million into that. Now we're gonna have great tennis right there in the city of Saginaw, going to have a celebration park over there. For the people that wanna get involved in the Civitan's Community Center, I thank you so much for wanting to be involved in our city. I went to Civitan, and I was a first-world community kid, too, so I went to both community centers. And I know what it did for me as a kid. You know, sometimes when I was growing up and I got into tight situations, I can always hear those elders at those community centers, I can hear their voices, say, "Michael, don't do that, don't do that." And sometimes, that got me out of trouble. Now we're going to have great tennis right there in the city of Saginaw, going to have a celebration park over there. For the people that want to get involved in the Civitans Community Center, I thank you so much for wanting to be involved in our city. I went to Civitan, and I was a First Ward Community Kid, too, so I went to both community centers. And I know what it did for me as a kid. You know, sometimes when I was growing up and I got into tight situations, I can always hear those elders at those community centers. I can hear their voices saying, "Michael, don't do that, don't do that." And sometimes that got me out of trouble. You know, everybody here knows what the city needs. We need some more jobs, we need more citizens, and we need some housing. All those things that we all want to see happen in the city of Saginaw. If you look at that Washington corridor, if you notice, from other drive back to the city, there's not that many businesses there at all. But soon as you step over I-75 and you go into Buena Vista, these guys got commercial parks over there like crazy, and they're coming out the highway, getting their gas, taking care of their business, unloading or unloading things and taking them back out our community. But we don't have our citizens necessarily working on those jobs in the city of Saginaw. Everybody know that our tax, tax, we have a tax cap. The only way we're going to do better with that, we get businesses here in the city of Saginaw, and we get more taxes, then we get more jobs and more housing in the city of Saginaw. So when you're thinking about that corridor, you may need to mix it up. You already got the foundry over there. Before that, we had a parts plant over there. Now we got a scrapyard over there, right there in that same area. So kind of, I see what the city planners are planning on doing, but I'd still like to talk to the citizens to make sure they all are involved in those talks and making sure we all can live happily and, you know, and have jobs in our community. It'd be nice to see people being able to walk to work from those areas over there, too. As a kid, I stayed there in the projects. Pierre Rollicky, my grandmother, stayed there, and I loved, you know, being in that community. And I was always striving, when you see the guys coming back and forth on the foundries and stuff like that, and they spent money in the community. But now we don't have those many jobs there. So we definitely need to bring some more jobs back to the city of Saginaw, so all our kids can be working. And on that count, I know for a fact that the carpenters' union is hiring and the laborers' union is hiring. If anybody know anybody that's willing to go to work and work hard, go online, put an application in for those particular jobs. And the pipe fitters, they hiring too. So you guys need to get out there and get our citizens, let them know that we do have some jobs here in the city of Saginaw. You know, maybe some of our kids are not trained for those jobs, but they can be trained for those jobs. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was waiting for him to give me a couple minutes.
I was looking over here. Motion to extend the Mayor Pro Tem time for two minutes.
I, I would like to say one other thing.
Second. It's been moved to second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let's try this again. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. The other thing I wanted to mention, that everybody know Dante Davis. Dante Davis had brought STEM to the city of Saginaw. Last year, he was at the African-American Festival, or two years ago, and he had the Delta College. Thank you, Delta College. He had the STEM van there, a bus there, and teaching our kids STEM. Well, he got that program running like 100 miles an hour here in the city of Saginaw, that SASSA. I think I have attended at least four or five events and mentored the kids when they were doing different science projects. And next, this Friday, the kids that participated in that event, he got the Pistons bus coming up here to pick up 40 students to take them down to a Piston game. I mean, that's a beautiful thing, you know, for a person to do something like for our citizens. I'll be riding on that bus with some of the little brothers and sisters from the Big Brothers and Sisters program, and we're going, my credit union's going to donate some money so they can get some, they're going to get my credit card with Wanda Gas name on it so they can spend some money when they down there at the event. But one thing else, Mr. Davis lives in California. He works in California and he works in Detroit, I think. And he comes to Saginaw to do this. And you know what else he did? He signed up to be a big brother in the city of Saginaw so he can mentor one guy one-on-one himself. I mean, we got people here that skid of our kids, and here we got people coming all the way from California to mentor our kids. So all of us can be mentors to these kids. It don't take much, it don't take a lot. What am I doing at home is what they doing. If I'm barbecuing, they barbecuing. If I'm cutting the grass, they cutting the grass. If I'm listening to my wife, they listening to my wife. I mean, it's, it's just a family thing to have kids around a family unit. You know, it's a beautiful thing to see these guys grow up. On that note, I'm going to share this and be quiet. My little brother has a, well, I have a little brother, Big Brothers program right now. He's 15 years old, and he went from a little brother to a big brother. He's 15 years old, he wears a size 14 shoe, and he got burnt out last week. And I hate to see him do that, but me and my wife was fortunate enough to help him out a little bit and, you know, make him smile. So that's, you know, my good thing for this weekend. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening again. I, I just got a few things. One, I'd like to publicly thank Councilwoman Sylvia. I gave her a challenge, and I'm forever saying to council as a whole, find something constructive that moves the city forward to work on. When I asked her, she didn't hesitate. And we had over 225 people between in person and online who will be eligible. We're hoping, we're crossing our fingers, that some of these people can actually get some of this money to get their homes fixed. We did, and we really did have people in the same district, Mr. Bull, that you were talking about, who are now going to be eligible to get money. They are applying. I don't know if we're going to do it again. I know that was your question to me. It's too much going on, and the application starts on the 18th, and I call myself giving people time to get their paperwork in, get everything situated. But I do want to publicly thank you, Council, Council Per, Councilwoman, because you didn't have to do it, and you did. I also like to thank the city manager, along with the management staff, for putting together the workshop we had on Friday. It was phenomenal. We're learning how to be better people, better council persons for you all. And we actually had professional people come in. Even though Ms. Jan gets on me, we actually had some other outsiders come in to give us an enlightenment experience on Robert's Rule of Order, parliamentary procedures, and we talked a lot about our, our order of business and how we do what we do so that we can be better. I'm going to keep telling y'all, it's a new season, it's a new day. Fresh anointing is coming our way. The spirit of power and prosperity. It's a new season, and it's coming for us. On Saturday at 3:30, you know, I'm always doing something. If you're not busy, come to Hoyt Park. I got 2,300 baskets that me and my citizens who like giving away stuff, we're giving away baskets to the kids. Now, do the kids have to be present? No. But please, get them baskets to some kids. You know how we do, we get, and we think we're going to come and get four, five bags? Please give it to the babies. The other thing is, I'd like to thank, publicly thank, the mayor from...
Motion to extend the time for two minutes.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any, anybody want, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those in favor signify by saying no. I just wanted to thank the mayor of Midland, the mayor of Franklin moved, because on last Wednesday, yours truly was always doing something, got no business, but I actually got the Bay Region people together. And it was phenomenal. We were at SBSU. I'd like to thank Councilman Copeland and Councilwoman Sylvia for attending, and anyone who attended, I need you to understand, I am so serious when I say we're going to walk hand in hand. If we're going to be a city, we've got to learn how to work with one another. Last year, it was love. What the world needs now is love, sweet love. This year, it's a new season. Can we make them come together and put love and season all in the same room so that we can grow? We should be heart thrives. All my public speakers, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, all of you, for coming. I get excited when I see people, and I get even more excited when I see us walking hand in hand, trying to do something to move the city forward. Saginaw is changing. Whether you want accepted or not, we changing. Dr. Gavin, thank you so much, along with Michigan Banner for bringing Joe Madison earlier this year. And that's who got me fired up, was Joe Madison. Because he talked about, "Don't talk about it, be about it."
That's right.
If you not about your business, stop talking. If you not going to do what you need to do to move this city forward, get out the way. Because we going forward. I don't know about y'all, but I'm going forward. I got skin in the game. Watch the city manager's face. I got skin in the game. We were in a meeting this morning, and that came out of my, "I got skin in the game." Madam Clerk, thank you so much. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we are now at reports from the city manager.
Do I have time left? I can always give you some.
Oh, because you got skin in the game.
The mayor, and Mayor Pro Tem did ask me to talk about the Civitan building and just where we stand with that. So going back a number of years, probably at least 10 years ago or more, we, we were still using that building. The First Ward was operating in there, and they had, I think, basketball still. At that time, the boiler went out in the building, and neither the First Ward nor the city had funding for that. It is true that our recreation, Parks and Recreation funding has dramatically decreased. However, you know, we have to recognize that a lot of the costs that was mentioned for police and fire, a lot of that is, is for OPEB and pension costs. That's not all directly going to that. Our actual general fund, entire budget, it's about $33 million to $35 million. So regarding the Civitan specifically, we did have that development agreement with an individual for at least two or three years, and nothing happened with the building during that time, and the individual returned the building to the city. And that's been two or three years since that was returned as well. So now, at this point, we do have at least three organizations interested in the building, I think, as a result of the news story. I know probably the three organizations have all gone through the building, or three organizations or individuals have gone through the building, and there might be a fourth one as well. Interested parties can contact the manager's office or inspections if they want to see the building, see the condition, estimate costs, and so on. We'll be happy to do that and work with anyone. At this point, right now, we just have a parking agreement on the agenda tonight, which is, I think, a one-year agreement that is, can be canceled by either party with 14 days notice. So that's where we are with that. But that does go into what Ms. Avella said. ARPA for Neighborhoods, I think that's a great opportunity for all of our neighborhoods because we have, and I, I hesitate to mention the organizations because you always, you're always going to leave some out, but Urban Tennis Foundation, Friends of Hoyt Parks, Positive Results Downtown, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Junior Achievement, Was Here for a Long Time, Japanese Cultural Center. Those organizations are always fundraising, and it's, it's very difficult work, and I know they're going back to the same people over and over again, asking for funding. So we do have opportunities now to do that and really make an, make an impact. And I, I think we will hear from the Urban Tennis Foundation maybe at the next meeting, but their project was over $3 million. So that was a significant fundraising event by them. Couple of other items. We do have the 2022 Police Officer of the Year is Detective Philip Graves, and he's here tonight in the back. He always comes to our meetings. So congratulations to Detective Graves. I know Chief will put out more information about if there's an award ceremony. I'm not sure if they're going to be at that point yet, but the 2022 Civilian Employee of the Year is Tammy Pastorez both. Congratulations to both, and thank you for the service that they provide and dedication to the city. The Attorney General Dana Essel did visit the city and meet with the Mayor Pro Tem, staff, and me this week as well, and we did discuss a very number of projects. One that is very close to the mayor and the Mayor Pro Tem. We talked about an expungement program and getting the Attorney General's Office back up here to assist with that. She was very open to that. We also talked about the opioid settlement that the council voted to participate in. Those funds will probably be released to local units this summer. It's a 20-year payment from the drug company. So we'll get more information about that. There's, it has to be spent on very specific items. So once we get the funding, she couldn't tell us at this time what the city's portion is going to be, but when we do get that information, we'll provide you additional updates on that. And I just wanted to talk about one more meeting that we had this week. We'll call it a meeting, but we have, or lives across the street from me, is a senior in high school, lives in the city of Saginaw. His family moved to Saginaw from Oregon for a job, and he came across the street last year and asked if he could job shadow with me. So he came with me for a tour of the water plant, met with some of the other city managers in the region. Training Officer Brandon Hausbeck was kind enough to give him a tour of Fire Station One and let him use the extraction equipment that they have over there. So that was a great experience for him. We talked to Phil Carwan, Public Services, some of the parks and cemeteries. And he really is interested in local government, and I didn't tell Paul Reinsch, who's a director of Water and Waste Water Treatment, but that student is planning to go to Delta College this fall and study water treatment. So Paul did a great job of selling that to him. But if you know individuals, students that are interested in local government, have them, have them contact a council member or my office. I'd be happy to bring them around because we need young people who are interested in working in local government, and there aren't, there aren't that many out there that are going into it, and that's why jobs like water treatment are going to be high demand in the next, in the next 10 years. So you know any kids that are interested, hey, we'll, we'll bring them around, and maybe Training Officer Hausbeck can let them cut up a car for a little bit. So, and Madam Mayor, we do have a presentation this evening that you mentioned. Dr. Gavin from Delta College has an update on the downtown center and also probably a general update about Delta College. So Dr. Gavin, can you come back up?
All right. Now I understand the order, so thank you.
Okay, that's okay.
But also thank you for the earlier presentation. It really is, I accept it with gratitude. Wanted to, like, like Tim had mentioned, I wanted to give you a little bit of an update of what's going on at Delta to include some specific elements with regard to the city of Saginaw. And I wanted to also share, without getting, making this presentation too long, I did want to share a couple of things about why I ended up at Delta, one of which is the city of Saginaw. I found the city of Saginaw, the three, oh, excuse me, the county of Saginaw, really, of one of the three that we serve in a heavy way, to be very interesting to me because it matches some of the demographic areas in which I grew up, right outside of Chicago. Actually, I'll tell you the story, too. I was down in Dallas this weekend to see my daughter, and the, I was pumping my gas, and a gentleman was in an old-school Pistons uniform. And I was thinking about this as you were telling your story about this weekend. And I said, "Old-school Pistons?" And he said, "I'm from Saginaw, Michigan." And I said, "Get out of here." And I said, "I'm from Chicago, and it's too bad the Bulls used to beat up on that team." It took him a while first, I remember. Anyway, but that tells you the reach of Saginaw. He was down there for work in Dallas, coming back to the city in a couple weeks to be here permanently again. And that tells you something about the education that he had received, even though he still was a Pistons fan. So I did want to let you know a couple of things of why, why we have the center downtown and some of the thinking that went down behind it, but also some of the opportunities. I heard that, that term thrown or articulated today, tonight, a couple times by members of the council as well as people in the audience. We see great opportunity in the, in Saginaw as a county, as a city as well. One of the things that we see, and I see as part of the reason for higher education, especially of community college education, is that we are seeing a phenomenon in the economy that is distinct from past economies, where we have people who are, as you know, of the Alice population, increasing over and over again, where they can't make ends meet, but they're not necessarily under the poverty line. Those are the people that also need attention, and we have a significant amount of those in Saginaw. We also have the ability collectively to think about the ways in which higher education is being framed currently in the discourse of America. And I have to say, even being here today to talk... And I have to say, even being here today to talk about, hearing the citizens talk about politics, that's not the kind of national politic, political rhetoric that we see and it's something to be proud of. And I think Delta can be part of that development of citizens in the future with regard to the kind of rhetoric that can be used, but also the kind of problem solving that Mayor Moore was talking about earlier. And our responsibility, we see, is uplifting people through education and transforming the society that we all take part in as a result, with the notion and the fundamental idea that we, as a higher education enterprise for 300, over 300 years, has been one that has marginalized people over and over again. In the current era in which we live, you're also seeing the marginalized are being further marginalized by some groups of people, either through trying to make sure that they're not educated, nonsensical rhetoric regarding critical race theory, as well as the concepts that, that higher education is not worth its value. All of those things, all of those discourses are actually meant to marginalize those who are not educated to begin with or marginalize those who would otherwise be marginalized by those who have been in power for a long time. So one of the things that we see is fundamentally important at Delta is to reframe and rethink the social structures and how higher education can position itself within those social structures to change those social structures. And that's a very different thing than, that's a very different thing than talking about, to your point, Mayor Moore, about Joe Madison, talking about diversity, equity and inclusion. It's being about an institution that can create one that is absolutely equitable. So we've created a framework. This is our, this is our diversity, equity, belonging and inclusion framework that we are centralizing all of the data that we utilize on campus, but also towards action. Yeah, you were there. Pam Clark was at our enrollment, an enrollment meeting today, actually, where I was actually very proud of the work that we're starting to do with regard to pushing people to think differently with regard to what has been normal, understanding that normal is not benign. When we think about returning from the pandemic, we have to understand that we need to reimagine, not rebuild, the way in which we have existed. And so we will be, we are breaking out our policies, practices, procedures, as well as data in these four sectors disaggregated in a way that we can start to see how people are affected by race, class, gender, veteran status and more. Centralizing race as it is the factor by which we are, and I want to make sure I'm using my language here precisely because I actually know I will, but I want to make sure you hear it the same way. The institution is not serving all the students in the way it needs to. It's not that the students are not performing. It's the institution is not serving certain students the way that it needs to. Those who are on financial aid are not served as well as those who are not. Those who are of marginalized races and on financial aid are sometimes disproportionately served by the institution at a negative 20% in terms of completion. So we have created, since I've gotten there, definitions of what belonging, equity, diversity and inclusion means to ensure that they cannot, those terms, and I'll just be talking from my own rhetoric here. Those terms cannot be weaponized in ways that can be asserted by those who don't want to see change by saying, "Well, that's my diverse thought." No, we have an actual definition what diversity, equity, belonging and inclusion will mean. We're using data to ensure that we will be making action towards making sure that we have absolutely no, what we've been calling opportunity gaps, not equity gaps, opportunity gaps for our students to complete their degree. So that is a whole transformation of a community college structure and system. Those of you who attended Delta and any community college, this is not a criticism of Delta. We have all built ourselves off of enrolling as many students as we can. That's been our financial model and that's how we subsequently have survived. But we need to change the whole, it's like turning a whale in a bathtub. We have to actually shift towards not getting students in, but making sure when they come, they stay and then graduate. Those, it seems like an easy concept, but it's not. Everything from mindsets to behavior to procedures, policies, all have to change with the idea of completion and equity as the centralizing forces with which we're doing. So it's going to take some time, but the work is already beginning. So we see Saginaw as a partner in this work. The city of Saginaw and the county of Saginaw, it is a partner in this work. We see, 41% of our enrollment does come from the county of Saginaw. It is the largest population. And now that we have this center down here, we want to make sure that it's used as a vehicle for the transformation that I've been talking about to include ways in which we think about scheduling courses and which programs we offer. We actually had, again, same enrollment meeting today. I was shocked by this meeting, I have to tell you. You all should have been there too. It was, I could not believe what they were saying. So meaning in a good way of, we're going to proactively think about the kind of program schedules and get to students to understand what they need in order to get to there. So we've had some good internal shifts with regard to this direction and I see promise ahead. We have had, this is some of the major data with regard to costs with regard to the building. But at the same time, we had our first classes offered in 2019. We had 500 students enroll in this winter, which during the pandemic is pretty good. It's a little bit above what we wanted, pre-pandemic projections. And we're actually trying to think about ways in which to ensure that we're offering scaffolding classes in a way that makes sure that students can take six credits to nine credits in a single day in a more seamless way than they have in the past, which was disrupted because of the pandemic. But we're really trying to make sure that when we come back, it isn't a reimagined state. So here's our head count, you can see, that's, I actually was one ahead of you. So here, these are the, this data shows you where we were for fall, two falls. We were above 487, we were about, right above 500 in winter. I'm still getting my terms right. We called it spring on the East Coast. It's not spring, though. I have to tell you, the weather here is tough. But here's, some of the benefits, you can read through here with regard to the center. But one of the things that we've found is that we have been able to convert a couple of the multipurpose classrooms into healthcare labs. And so we're running different programs that are not, they're not nursing necessarily, but they are in the healthcare field. And some articulate into nursing, things like phlebotomy. And I forget the other name of one, I should have remembered it.
Clinical medical assistant.
Thank you. Clinical medical assistant are running full certificates up there right now. We did talk real quickly about what we call the Saginaw Center for Excellence, which we have 27 students enrolled in the first cohort, which will begin in fall. I have to tell you that the partnership that we have with Dr. Roberts has been fantastic. And it is really unheard of to set up a program like that in what really has been about six months. And it is a result also of he and his team being able to come to the table and proactively do the work. One of the things that, two of the things that are excellent about that, beyond the fact that we have 27 students, is that those students will gain, have the opportunity to get an associate's degree by one year after graduating from high school. On top of that, we are establishing partnerships so that they will have the ability to get accelerated bachelor's and master's degrees, should they want it, without having to leave Saginaw. Those are on their way, but they're meaning like ink is almost dry on those papers. So we are also, one of the nice things about the, so here are the centers, excuse me, the programs that we're offering. And those will actually have those scaffolding courses where we're aiming to allow those students to complete. That's not, this is separate from the Saginaw Center for Excellence, Academy of Excellence. These programs are separate. These are for anybody who wants to take the courses. And we want those students to be able to complete within three years, based on how we schedule, which is actually in line with, even though it sounds like a two-year degree, most of our students are not taking classes full-time. Would also want to make sure that I communicated that outside, if you have not seen the new sculpture, it's a really nice space that has been created out there for the, for students as well as the community to gather. One of the things that I think I heard from many, many of the council people was the idea about connection and how we need to come back and think about community. And this is one of those elements that we did think about in terms of ensuring that students felt like they could stay, they could study, but also be outside and enjoy something and so that wasn't very intentional. I lost my one bullet point and I need to tell you this last thing. One of the things that we have also done, and you'll start to see news about, is that Delta College is paying for a bus to go straight from the Saginaw bus stop down here to Delta College's main campus, four-round trips a day, Monday through Thursday, starting in fall. And that, back to Dante Davis, who's also a partner in crime with me, that we had talked about, is that will also help, we hope, diversify our STEM population as the labs on the main campus are more robust in kind than we can offer at the Saginaw Center. So it is a very intentional approach to thinking about how we want the output to be equitable with regard to the programs that we're offering as well. So there'll be more news coming out about that, but we've, that is all on our dime. It's free bus for students, they do not have to pay. So with that, I will close. I know your time is precious, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have and or...
Do we have any questions?
Got a question. Wouldn't the other, Dr. Goodenough, the president, she said that there would be some skilled trade classes out there. Is that true?
Well, not right now. And I got to make sure I offer you the reason. The Saginaw Center was not built in a way that we can offer. So that was, but what we are trying to do is two things. One is the bus that we talked about. The other is that we are in robust conversations with all superintendents of Saginaw County about how to share potential spaces on their campuses, even after hours for non-high school students so that they can get access to those skilled trades. So the answer is no at the center, but we're trying to do otherwise.
Yeah. I didn't mention too, that I'm a Delta College student too, is where I got my skilled trade certificates to be a pipefitter, so.
Well, you, this is a very, very well-educated county council going to Delta College. The best university college in the country.
It is.
Any, yes.
Got a question or comment? I am very excited. Your presentation made me almost want to sign back up for school.
I should have brought my registration.
Very excited for what you guys are doing.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
Councilman Copley.
Dr. Gavin, we've met sometimes and this is my first time hearing this presentation. And you were talking my language. I want to say I appreciate you. I appreciate the intentionality that you have, since you've come as president of Delta College, to see your intent with the city of Saginaw. Although we work as colleagues at varying institutions, seeing what you all are doing at Delta, it's just, it's a blessing to see what's coming to our community. I'm an advocate for higher education. And what you all are doing, you're making it accessible to our community. And that is, really, most times we need the opportunity. And you are making sure that the barriers that most of our students have to achieve that higher education opportunity, it's available to our community. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Can I, I just want to build off that because since I, you get a college president a microphone, you got trouble. I wanted to say two things to you and I appreciate that. One is that we are also in the throes of building a structure for our students that recognizes all of the things that you were talking about earlier with regard to this, even the center that you were discussing earlier, where most of our students that don't make it, it's not because they can't, they're academically inferior. It's they've got a full-time job and they've got a kid that needs diapers. So we're thinking about, and this is my favorite, I want you to remember this line because I wrote it. It's really important. It's, we want, we want the hardest part of college to be in the classroom, right? Nowhere else. So we want to get rid of everything else that could possibly get in the way from them learning and take care of that somehow, either through partnership or paying for it. And the second part is, this is another line I wrote that I'll just say. But we take only the top 100% who apply. So it's for everybody.
Councilman Floret.
Thank you. The Chicago Tribune had come out with a study in January of 2022 that Saginaw is of the 30 that they had surveyed, the worst cities to be able to find employment following getting a degree. Are you aware of that study?
No, not.
So we're number 27. For some reference, Belle Creek is number 30, Flint's number 11. I think Elsino in California is number one. But given that information, and that's something that kind of came across my radar and I kind of, my heart dropped because I am also a fan of academics. Now that we know that, is there any, outside of, and thank you so much for committing to diversity, but is there anything to combat that stance, how we can get off that list?
I would think so. So I think the answer to that's partnerships. So, and I'll be a little concrete with you. So we know that, for instance, there was an outfit, Bitwise, that was thinking about coming to Saginaw. We offer those programs, right? Like, and we're actually starting to think about a non-credit arm to the college, which offers entry level, which offers, not entry, it offers certifications in workforce areas at a faster clip than a traditional credit would, credit certificate would. Same exact learning, same exact credential. So how we can insert ourselves where Bitwise was going to be is actually one of the things that Pam, I was going, I don't know if Jennifer already reached out to you or not, but that's one of the things that I think that I would like to just insert Delta into, take Bitwise, put Delta in there. And we're going to create something that was not there at Delta before in order to fit that, that void, if you will. But I also think that there is opportunity with regard to apprenticeships that the federal government is offering dollars towards, that we can get partnerships with regard, like we have, whether it's Saginaw or in Midland, with Saginaw residents working in Midland, the idea, I understand all the tax ramifications about this, but we want people to have jobs, is the notion of thinking about how we get the pipeline set up for companies that have similar value systems of diversifying their workforce by getting them work. So my answer to that was like partnerships, but there's a concrete one with Bitwise that we should just insert ourselves right now. Where there, those kinds of jobs, I mean, just, I'll be quiet after this, but some of those jobs are borderless, right? In cyber, in, you know, Pickett, that has to do with technology. You could be working in Saginaw, you know, but also be working for a company that's not here and vice versa. So how do we, how do we take advantage of the notion of time and space and how it's being redefined in the pandemic in a way that I think is potentially good for our citizens?
Yeah, that's really great. And then last, there was a study from MLive for the top 10 jobs for 2020 until 2028. I guess the top 10 that are growing are personal care aides, registered nurses, food prep, home health aides, software development, market research analysts, industrial engineers, production workers, medical assistants and cooks at restaurants. So really just healthcare and food service. Are those classes that Delta also offers or concentrates on?
We don't offer food service, but again, that's a non-credit opportunity that we have. And I'll just, I'll reinforce one element of that. The healthcare industry around here has vacancies, right? So we have programs with vacancies. And one thing that I could solicit help from anybody is just the notion that, hey, college is worth it. There's that narrative out there that people are listening to, that people are not coming to school. We, I'll just give you a concrete example. I think it was, we have 28% of our, it's 28 or 38? 28% of our population right now going to Delta is male. That's a problem, right? So there is a narrative out there that males are buying into, that it is not worth it to go to college. And that needs to, that's a cultural phenomenon that needs to, that's a narrative that we need to redefine. And that's through this kind of room, to households, to your neighbors, those kinds of things, you know. We're there, there's a pipeline and we can serve the workforce, but we need some help also just in the regular conversations that we have. You know, go to Delta, it's a good value. You're going to get your return on investment.
Yeah.
Great, thank you so much.
Any other questions?
I just have a comment. I hope you stay until the end because I definitely would like to continue the conversation around workforce development. I work as a director of workforce development at a higher institution. I'll just say that, so I think we could benefit from a conversation.
Dr. Gavin, as always, it is always a joy to thrill. I just need to say this because it's burning. When I say we're poised for a comeback, we in a season. Whatever myth we've heard about, people talk about, if we are not proud of where we live and if we don't try to do better for ourselves, why should you ask somebody else to do it? So Dr. Gavin, you know, I heard you say something that I haven't heard any other president say. Me and my team want to make it to where it's accessible for the community. I've been in this city for 66 years and I've never heard anybody say that. Not even SBSU, okay? And I'm just saying, so I just want you to know, I thank you.
Likewise.
Because we have a lot of people who are going to benefit, who are going to benefit in these short-term jobs or short-term trainings, but they are going to be able to feed their families, and that's what it's all about. Am I my brother's keeper? Oh, yes, I am. I'm responsible for you and you responsible for me. So, Dr. Gavin, hats off, hands, whatever you need from me, I'm all in. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Likewise, thank you all, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Gavin, and I think, I think there are a few other things at Delta too that from, as Dr. Gavin mentioned, the healthcare industry. I meet with both Covenant and St. Mary's routinely, they do need staff. And also Dow Chemical is another one that is always needing staff. And I think they have programs at Delta that work with Dow and also Hemlock Semiconductor. So both of those, there are a lot of opportunities if you go to Delta, and I know they have a great placement. And I do want to just go back a number of years. And the, I think the whole concept of the downtown center was to create that opportunity and access. I first started the manager's role in 2013 and Delta had contacted me to give, we gave multiple presentations to their board about a location. We had three locations in the city, and I think there was one in Buena Vista Township. And they selected the downtown center to build this $12 million project. That used to be a parking lot right there, and I think there's a lot of new life downtown. And that was, I believe it opened just pre-pandemic, so you're going to see the results of that. And I, and I don't think we can really appreciate it without going back and thanking Dr. Goodnow as well for her commitment to downtown. And Pam Clark, who has been in, she might be the only one that's left there that worked through the whole project. Larry Ramsair was great to work with in their facilities during that time. I mean, it was a good six or seven years where, and working with our state officials too to, to try to get this done. So it's great to see it moving forward and what it, what it's going to offer our residents and, and our citizens in the heart of downtown. And we thank Dr. Gavin and, and all the staff that's dedicated at Delta College for, for working on this. And Madam Mayor, that concludes the management update.
Thank you so much, do we have any questions for the city manager? Yes.
Mr. Manager, just wanted to, to the announcement of the profit share, I don't even want to call it that, but profit share from the marijuana sales. And I just wondered if there was any internal discussion or ideas, thoughts on what are we going to do with the funds?
Well, for the first year, the profit sharing portion or the revenue sharing portion, it's, sorry?
Excise tax.
Excise tax is, it's not a significant amount, I think it's 56,000 because for the last, we got the one facility open during the period that was counted. I don't know what, I don't think we have plans for it now, it could be potentially, it would roll into the general fund at this point, but it could be used, I mean, you could do a number of things. You could roll that to recreation, you could, once we get more information about the opioid settlement, you could roll those funds together. And I, I think we're going to need some partnerships with that, depending on how much funding there is. Our officers and our firefighters both already use, or have Narcan available, which is very important. So we could potentially expand that, that program internally, but you all know, we're not, we don't offer mental health services traditionally or treatment. So it may be an opportunity for us to partner with other organizations to do that once we get a handle on how much money that will be coming in. The settlement, for the opioid settlement, it, it's a very large number when you hear about the settlement, it's paid over 20 years. So perhaps if, once we know the exact amounts we're getting, that's an opportunity to set up a program with some partners that can be funded for that long period of time. And maybe roll some of this money into that as well. That's initial thoughts, but it could be used for, for pretty much anything you do in the general fund.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I had one, sure.
Councilman Florez.
Thank you. For the ARPA committee meetings, we had discussed on email the probability of it being videotaped. I had relayed that information back over to my constituents, and they still believe that even if it were an audio recording, that that would be something that they would really benefit from and prefer. Is that something we're able to do?
Well, audio is probably the more difficult portion, we have 12 mics and we have probably 24, around 20 people to try to record, and you know from this meeting, you all have your own mic. And that's, sometimes we still don't pick it up. So that, that's really the big issue for us recording that. We could put a wide shot of, you could have video, but the issue is going to be the audio portion. But, you know, we've had members of the public come to all those meetings, I think so far that we've had, and they've been pretty positive about seeing it, so we, we do encourage people to come. We could talk with our technical services department again, but I think that, that's our biggest hurdle is really trying to make it so everybody can be, will be able to be heard.
So we, we do have the equipment, but would it be a cost to the city at all?
No, we don't have the equipment right now, really, to, to be able to hear everybody in the group, we don't have that equipment. If that's something that, to do, I mean, you'd have to buy a lot more equipment. And actually, I think that, I think we expect the committee to be done with their work in fairly short order as far as getting those recommendations. So I don't know if that makes sense to do at this time.
Okay, because if we were to, to put in the order, by the time the microphones got here, even if we were to spend it through the ARPA funds, they would get here and they, they would be done by that time?
Yes, yeah, I, I would guess, we're trying to make sure that the recommendations come in fairly quickly. And, and people have to remember, this is, you all are ones that are going to make the decisions on the money that's spent. That committee is not deciding any funding. It's all going to come back to you, the report will come back to you. So you'll get reported on their discussion, their recommendations, and then it's up to you all to make those decisions anyway. So all, all of your deliberations, discussion will be broadcast and recorded, so people will be able to see that.
Okay. So I would make a motion in unfinished business to, the motion for it to be recorded? Is that correct?
Miscellaneous.
Miscellaneous, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Tim, to piggyback on what you were just talking about, in the last ARPA meeting that I attended, you're right. It says here in their timeline, June, review the submissions according to the agreed upon metrics, start identification top scoring projects for, for approval by city council. That to me says that their goal is to have that to us by June.
Yes. Councilwoman.
Thank you very much. City manager, you were saying something about the Civitan Center, you said it was three other organizations that was interested in the building, if I'm not mistaken, that's what you said. Can you say who they are and are they, is their organization centered around youth?
Well, I mean, you, we know one is, is Stars because that was in the paper, they're interested in feasibility study. I know, I, I'm not going to put anybody's name out there, but I know for sure the other individual who was, who is interested in it is youth-focused.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mayor Protemp, did you have comments?
No, I, I just. Just excuse me, if you guys have a conversation you want to carry, you guys just kind of interrupted to the other people. You can go outside with that conversation because it's kind of, the people in the front keep looking in the back because they can't really hear. Thank you.
That's my Mayor Protemp. Any other questions? I, I thank you so much, City Manager. I know that people are anxious, and we talk about it all the time, to, to handle the ARPA. But I do believe that if we take our time, let this committee help us, and let this team help us. I think that a lot of the questions that are asked about what we're going to do with the money, I do believe that we'll see the money, because we'll see stuff rolling even more than what it is now in the city. Like anything else, it takes time. So, thank you, City Manager. No other questions, Madam Clerk.
We are now at consent agenda.
The agenda has been available at City Hall and on, on the city webpage and SGTV channel 191. I need a motion to accept your consent agenda, leaving rules for exceptions.
So moved.
It's been moved in support, do I have any exceptions? Hearing no exceptions, call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, our next order of business is board commission and committee reports.
Do we have any boards or commissions report? Yes, Councilwoman.
I serve on the Saginaw Economic Development Corporation Board, and I just want to share a reminder of the local small business workshop taking place on Monday, April 25th, from 5:00 to 7:00 at 2824 Perkins Street. It is sponsored by the SEDC Huntington, CAC, and the Michigan Small Business, and Saginaw African-American pastors. So if you are interested and need some assistance, please, please show up on April 25th.
Anyone else, yes, ma'am?
No, I just wanted to ask, is that going to be at CAC?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? I go to a lot of meetings, but I don't report on all of them, so. Madam Clerk.
Our next order of business is appointment of boarding commission members.
We have six reappointments that we can do in one motion.
Yes, ma'am.
I need a motion.
So moved. Support.
It's been moved in support, any questions or concerns about anybody that we, that we've reappointed? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor, we're at ordinance introduction, we do have one tonight. It's an ordinance to amend Chapter 153 zoning code of Title 15 land usage by adding Section 153.534 definitions and amending Section 153.537 Regulation of Structures, Section 153.538 Historic District Commission, Section 153.539 Procedure for Review of Plans, Section 153.540 Appeals, Section 153.541 Establishing New Districts and Identifying Historic Resources, Modifying or Eliminating Existing Districts, and by adding Section 153.545 Titled Violation, Fine, Payment of Cost, and Section 153.546 Acquisition of Historic Resources.
I need a motion to introduce this ordinance.
Support.
It's been moved in support. Discussion. I just knew Bill was going to say so.
I didn't know if anybody had any questions.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor, we're at resolution, our first one is pledging to follow best practices of civility and civil discourse.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved. Support.
Any discussion?
I had some real quick. I had, first, thank you so much to Mayor Protemp, I think that's something that's long overdue in terms of something that we want to implement here on top of our procedures that we follow as council members. Looking this up, it, it is similar to a resolution that was passed, I'm not sure if you're familiar with this, but the city of Moreau Bay in California back in 2019. But there are a couple of tweaks, originally the information was taken from the League of Women Voters. But I would motion to strike the third paragraph where it says, one means of improvement in the communications, all the way down to communicating via electronic means. And substitute it with, whereas we, the mayor, the city council members, commissioners, appointees, and staff of the city of Saginaw, in order to ensure civility and civil discourse in all of our meetings, reaffirm and pledge our commitment to follow best practices of civility and civil discourse.
Do you have that in writing?
Yes. Would you like to?
Yes, so we can all see it to understand. I'm not sure what you had said, so I couldn't repeat it.
Do you want me to repeat it? Or just provide, do you want me to table it until the following meeting or?
Normally.
Is, is there, is there a second?
Right. I was just going to say. There's a motion on the floor to amend the document that you have in front of you, that came in your package. And the, I'm like, I'm like the clerk now, it was so much, I, I just got lost. But he wanted to strike something and add.
Can I ask a question? Or is it?
Do we have a second to the motion, that should be the first step.
Right. So do we?
I'll second it to ask him a question.
So we got a motion and we got a second. Now into discussion.
I couldn't do anything with it, simply because I can't even repeat the first or second sentence, I need to look at it. You know, so I don't know what we do after this, you know.
Okay, when you say you need to look at it, it came in your package on Thursday, so.
No, I'm saying what Mr. Councilman Flores said to me.
That was the same thing that the clerk said, is it in writing? Because she wanted to repeat it, and it was difficult in repeating it because it was so much.
So what do we do, that, maybe that's my question, what do we do?
Madam Clerk.
Would you have that in writing to share with the council?
I could write it out, and then, do you want me to write it out once and then provide it nine times or?
Well, I think in order for them to consider it.
I'm going to suggest what we do is, is that we bring it back to the next meeting.
Sure, okay.
Well, I can't make the motion.
I, I motion to postpone until the next meeting, so to, it can make amendments.
We have a motion.
We have a motion on the floor, you need to vote on this amendment.
So.
I, I think the best thing to do at this point is for Councilmember Flores to reread.
Yep.
His motion, so that council has a better understanding of what he's trying to do and can vote on the motion.
And tell us exactly what, what you want to strike out.
So it's the third paragraph, so the third whereas. So when it says one means for improvement in communications, all the way down to where it says when communicating via electronic means, and. So that would be stricken, and then we would substitute, we, the mayor, the city council members, commissioners, appointees, and the staff of the city of Saginaw, in order to ensure civility and civil discourse in all of our meetings, reaffirm and pledge our commitment to the following best practices of civility and civil discourse.
I want it in writing. The best, the best practices of who? Let's just get it in writing, we don't even have to.
Okay, well then let's vote on.
So we're going to call for the vote.
Yeah.
And the vote is, is to make the subsequent changes that was put on the table by Mr. Flores. I'm going to say it again. The vote is going to make the necessary changes that Councilman Flores has recommended. So we're calling for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Nay. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Williams.
Nay.
Councilmember Bench.
Nay.
Mayor Protemp Valls.
Nay.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Nay.
Councilmember Ostache.
Nay.
Councilmember Flores.
Aye.
Councilmember Copeland.
Nay.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia.
Nay.
Nay.
Mayor Moore.
Nay.
We have eight nay votes, one aye. The motion is denied. Now you're back to your main motion of adopting the resolution.
Then I'd make a mo, I'd motion.
You have the motion in front of you to adopt the resolution.
Yeah.
We have support.
Well, I'd...
Yes.
Can we get support?
Yes, it does.
We did have support.
You wouldn't have been able to move on if you didn't have.
Okay.
Okay, now I motion to postpone until the next meeting, so I can submit these amendments in writing.
There's a motion on the floor. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify.
I have a question.
Yes.
What is the desired outcome for striking this and substituting it with a new language? What, what, what desired outcome are we trying to accomplish? Because I, reading through it again, we're striking "when communicating via electronic means" from it, and removing a sentence. I just, I'm, before we receive the language, I'd just like to know, like, what is, what are we trying to accomplish by substituting the language?
Thank you, Chair. I think that all this language is very important. I think that if we're going to adopt this, that we would include all the other groups that were in the amended language. And then also, I have another point after the eighth bullet point that I'd like to submit as well. But we can either do it verbally, or I could submit it.
He can't even tell us what the...
All those in favor, I'm calling for the vote. All those in favor to table this?
No.
What is, what is, what is?
To the next meeting.
A motion to... There's a motion on the floor. Madam Clerk, can you read the motion again, please?
The motion is to postpone Resolution 1 until the next...
There's a motion on the floor to postpone this until the next meeting. Calling for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Bench.
No.
Mayor Protemp Valls.
No.
Councilmember Scherzer.
No.
Councilmember Ostache.
I'll say yes.
Councilmember Flores.
Yes.
Councilmember Copeland.
Aye.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We have six yes and three nay. Motion is adopted, approved. So, the motion is postponed.
That's right. Madam Clerk?
Our second resolution is the establishment of an obsolete property rehabilitation district at 2138 North Carolina Street.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved in support. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk?
Our final resolution tonight is approving the cost agreement with the Michigan Department of Transportation for the rehabilitation of the Genesee Avenue Bridge.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved. Support.
It's been moved in support. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay.
Mayor, you are not miscellaneous.
Miscellaneous. Do we have any miscellaneous? I better not do that. Don't do that tonight. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you so much.